We will call our meeting to order. This is the June 19th, 2024 meeting of the Murfreesboro Planning Commission. We do have a quorum present today. I don't believe we had anybody register for any public comments. So our first item of business is to approve the minutes of the May 28th, 2024, and June 5th, 2024 Planning Commission meetings. Have a chance to review those ahead of time. Did anybody have anything they needed to make change to or have questions about?
If there is none, I move for approval.
Second.
Motion second, Ms. Jacob. Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye.
Okay, next is our consent agenda. And again, we did have the chance to review those items prior to the meeting today. Did anybody have any of those they would like removed from the consent agenda for further discussion? And if not, you're ready for a motion.
So move. Second.
Motion and second on the consent agenda, Ms. Jacob. Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye.
Okay, we have one item under old business today. This is a mandatory referral to consider the abandonment of a portion of a drain easement located on property along Gresham Lane. Civil Infrastructure Associates on behalf of Hensley Group is the applicant. Mr. Aguilera, how are you this afternoon?
I'm doing good, Chair Jones. I'll be the opening act for today on our staff agenda. So, let's get started. So our first item under old business today, as you said, is a mandatory referral request to abandon a portion of an existing drain easement. This request comes from Nathan Melson of Civil Infrastructure Associates on behalf of the Hensley Group. The easement in question, as you can see here, the easement in question is located on lots one and two of the Gresham Lane subdivision. This item, as you may be aware of and remember, this item was deferred back in June 5th during that planning commission and on the request that there be additional information during that review with the county and that third party. And so we have received that information. The staff has presented that, wanted to present that information, that they found that information, they found it consistent, found no major issue, they were able to review that with the third party and determined, again, that there would be no major significant concern of that, if I remember correctly, from Mr. Blomley during our discussion with them. But...
They have been provided the information from, by the applicant. And we have received no correspondence from the county, but the item was deferred to provide, so that the information could be provided to the applicant or to the county, and that information was provided to the county for them to review. And then, so we have brought it back on the agenda today as our recommendation remains the same as it was on June 5th when we first presented it to you.
So as Matthew said, again, that information is still the same. As you can see here in our staff report, again, just a reminder that for the attached correspondence, the original request for this was to abandon that portion of this drain easement. The purpose for the, the original purpose for this easement was, again, to encompass the entire existing drainage detention pond, the existing detention pond on Lot 57. However, the applicant has reconfigured that pond to be relocated, to be located on proposed Lot 7 west of lots 2 through 6, will no longer require that easement of that requested, no longer require that total entire easement area. And so they've requested, again, abandoning that portion of that easement area. The balance of the existing easement for the pond will remain in place with the recording of the final plat for Section 2 of the Gresham Lane subdivision. That is the companion piece of this, and we will see that item next on the agenda. The city engineer and project engineer have also reviewed this request and concurs that the easement abandonment is acceptable. Staff's conditions have not changed from the last meeting that we held. Sacramento recommends that the Planning Commission recommend approval of this request to City Council, subject to the following conditions. One, that if approved by City Council, the applicant will be responsible for providing the information necessary, including but not limited to any exhibits and legal descriptions for the legal department to prepare the legal instruments to formally abandon the portion of the easement in question. Condition two, that the legal instruments will be subject to final review and approval of the legal apartment. And then three, condition three, that the final plat for the Gresham Lane subdivision, Section 2, shall be recorded simultaneously with the recording of the quick claim deed abandoning the easement. And then final condition number four, that the applicant will also be responsible for the recording of the legal instruments, including the payment of the recording fee. I am here, if you have any questions. Ms. Katie Knoll is also here as well. She presented the last item to answer any specific questions. So she is present as well, should you have any questions.
Okay, I think, gist of it is, we provided the information to the county that they requested. Did anybody have any further questions?
Well, I wouldn't mind hearing from Ms. Knoll as to what the difference is that was made, it sounds like the day of the, of the last hearing, just so we understand what's different today than what was different from the prior application.
They increased the volume of the pond. The newest plan maintains the existing storage in the Gresham Lane pond. It reduces the peak flows from that pond through the 100-year storm, which exceeds our regulations, our regulations currently, probably not for long, you'll hear about that later, through the 10-year storm. And the only increase in the Lane-Agrapark pond is about an eighth of an inch in the water surface elevation.
And that, that information was given to them that same day?
Yes, I believe it was, if not the next day.
Okay.
I'm good. If there's no other questions, I move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second, Ms. Jacob. Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye.
Okay, moving on to plats and plans. Our first item there, continuing, is Gresham Lane, Section 2, final plat for six lots on 4.87 acres, zoned RS15, located along Gresham Lane. Hensley Group LLC is the developer. Again, Mr. Aguilera.
Thank you, Chair Jones. So this next item, of course, is Gresham Lane, Section 2, final plat, again, that companion piece to the mandatory referral that we were referring to. This is a final plat review for Gresham Lane, Section 2. The property is zoned RS15. The purpose of this plat is to subdivide an existing lot of record to create six legal lots of record and to acquire easements, as shown. Staff did not find any major concerns with the final plat. As you can see here, there were no outstanding items. We recommend approval, subject to all staff comments. I do want to point out specifically the staff comments with this final plat, your attention to comments number three and four of the staff report to show that, one, with this approval of our recommendation, the quick claim deed for the abandonment of the drainage easement must be recorded prior to the signing of the final plat. That is consistent, again, with the conditions of approval for the mandatory referral. And then condition number four, just as a reminder for procedural sake and for the applicant to be aware of, as well as you all, approval of the Gresham Lane, Gresham Lane, Section 2, final plat is subject to approval from the City Council for the mandatory referral application to abandon the drainage easement for the Gresham Lane subdivision, Section 2. So again, just stipulating for them to be aware that that mandatory referral application must still go to the City Council, must be approved for that. So this final plat is subject to City Council's approval of that mandatory referral application.
And we would anticipate taking that to council either next Thursday, if council meets next Thursday, or whenever the first regular evening meeting in July would be.
Okay. Any questions regarding this final plat?
Throw or not, I'll make a motion we approve, subject to all staff comments. Second.
Motion and second, Ms. Jacob. Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye.
Okay, Item B is the Village, Section 1. It's a master plan and preliminary plat for 39 lots and one common area on 6.34 acres, zoned PRD and PCD, located along Blackman Road. 360 Development LLC is the developer. Mr. Aguilera.
Thank you, Chair Jones. This next item in our plats and plan, of the plats and plans portion of the agenda, is the Village Master Plan and Preliminary Plat for Section 1. As you all may recall, this is the item that came before you back in January of 10th of this year for the public hearing for that village rezoning, annexation and rezoning application, approved of this development for the PRD portion and for the PCD. And so this preliminary plat and master plan now comes before you today for your review and consideration. As you all may remember, during that discussion, during that January 10th public hearing, there was a few stipulations, a few comments that were made regarding, especially specifically regarding the, this area, the western portion of the, of the property of the subdivision to have that, that buffer, that screening of the addition of that fence that was there to be included, and that is shown today on today's plans with that. The item then went to City Council to be approved during the March 7th City Council public hearing, where again, there was some further discussion and approval of that. So again, that's where, this is where we're at now. This is all coming for you just for Section 1 and Lot 1 of the PCD commercial lot. So as it is currently shown, I want to make sure I get to this so you can all see, for Section 1, as you can see, staff's review of the, of Section 1 of the PRD and PCD program book, the applicant has satisfied those minimum development standards, those lot sizes and setbacks, all that was discussed during those meetings. Staff has found that this preliminary plat to be consistent with that. As you can see here, there are two access points into this subdivision, one off of Duelin Drive and one that is to be coming in with Section 2. The amount of right-of-way improvements that will be included with this subdivision is an improvement to Blackman Road to include a turn lane for drivers to enter in off of the second street here, which is consistent with what we saw with the buildout of O'Shutton Square, where there was a turn lane made for that. Landscaping, there is to be a type D buffer to be planted on the residential lots adjacent to the commercial lots. That is in this location here. 7.5 feet of that, of that buffer will be planted. The remainder of it will be planted when the commercial lot is built out. That is, again, consistent with the program book. That all came before you all to ensure that, again, there was adequate screening and buffering. And so that's to have that type D buffer, including that opaque fence that it will be put in there to, again, provide that screening and buffering that you all saw during that rezoning application. And regarding, in terms of the lot size and those minimum lot width requirements, again, those are consistent with the program book. You have a minimum lot size of 4,650 square feet and minimum lot width of 50 feet. And again, that is consistent. And what we saw here with Section 1, with the amenities, is the 12 guest parking spaces that are being included with Section 1, as well as that common area that is to be included here with the remainder of it being built out with Phase 2. During the conversation, during the discussion with Planning Commission, when this item came before you all during that January 10th public hearing, a number of comments were raised by this commission regarding the lot size, regarding the quality of life, parking, drainage, et cetera. And so staff really wanted to review that, review these items during this preliminary plat review, made it a priority to ensure that those comments were being addressed during this preliminary plat review. We looked at, again, the function, the suitability of the lots, making sure the building envelopes, those future building envelopes were going to be able to accommodate these lot sizes as well as drainage. We wanted to ensure that this subdivision, especially for Section 1, was going to be draining efficiently and effectively with the remaining subdivision and the commercial lots, especially with the property to the south and what those current conditions showed. And we really appreciate SEC and the developer of working with us early on during this preliminary plat to make sure that we were, again, addressing those comments raised by Planning Commission to ensure that those priorities were met during this, this Section 1 review. And so staff has reviewed these items regarding driveways during the lot, and the lot size, lot widths, and we believe that there are no major outs, there are no real outstanding items with this. We believe the preliminary plat to be in good standing order and that we recommend that approval of this preliminary plat, subject to all staff comments.
Any questions?
Throw or not, I'll make a motion we approve, subject to all staff comments. Second.
Motion and second, Ms. Jacob. Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye.
Okay. Next, Item C is the Hooper Master Plan and Preliminary Plat for eight lots on 17.86 acres, zoned RS15, located along Segal Road. W. Bruce Hooper is the developer. Mr. Barbie, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. This next application before you today is the Hooper subdivision master plan and preliminary plat review for nine lots on 17.86 acres, zoned RS15. Subject property is located along Single Road, and Mr. W. Bruce Hooper is the developer. One of the things we wanted to point out, that there is a, an existing street stub to the west of the Windsor Green subdivision. A plat was approved in 2023, modifying the existing Lot 1 of the Hooper subdivision so that a, so that it had an appendage stretching out in front of the adjacent street stub. This plat was subsequently recorded, and while Lot 1 is a part of the master plan for the subdivision, it is not proposed to be modified with the companion final plat. Currently Windsor Green only has one access point, which is on West Thompson Lane. The stub adjacent to the Hooper property is the only other opportunity for ingress and egress to and from Windsor Green. The transportation staff has indicated that it has fielded complaints from residents of Windsor Green about difficulties exiting their neighborhood. Staff requested that the applicant provide a street connection between the Windsor Green subdivision street stub to the east of Segal Road with this development. However, staff and the applicant were unable to agree to the street, to the street connection. The applicant is pursuing approval of this subdivision plan without the extension of the street stub, and approval of the master plan, preliminary plat, and final plat as submitted will likely preclude the future extension of the street stub. And it looks like the street stub that I'm referencing is located... So I believe Mr. Matt Taylor is present for the applicant, and I'm also available if you have any questions.
Can I ask one question before we potentially hear from Mr. Taylor?
Yes, ma'am.
Can you kind of show me or give me just a brief explanation of what is different about this than what we looked at in, was it January of '23 or when we looked at this before? And I think we approved something at that time, did we?
Yes, at that time, there was a different plat that was submitted to lots, and I'm going from memory, it covered a much larger area, and I believe they included part of the Hooper bottom section.
The plat that was approved in summer of 2023, I'll pull up GIS here. All right, if Cable could pull up my computer on the, on the Planning Commissioner's screens. So the plat that was recorded in, or was approved in 2023 and then subsequently recorded, created three lots of record. It was this lot that's identified as 3265. 3281 was an existing lot, and, but it stopped, I think, about right here. And so there was some land that was added on to the back of it, as well as this, the appendage right here that Mr. Barbie referenced in his, in his comments. And then 3289 was created as a lot of record. And so the plat that's before you right now, Mr. Barbie, if you could pull up the...
Can I stop you there?
Sure.
So this plat was approved without this appendage being connected to this development. Is that a correct statement?
No, the plat was approved with the appendage. So it was originally submitted in July of 2023 without the appendage. And then the plat, before it went to Planning Commission, on a resubmital, the appendage was, was added to the, to the plat, so...
We see that too?
I'm sorry?
Can we see that also?
That plat?
Yes.
I'll have to go on US Title search and pull that plat up.
I mean, it would just be good to know what we had already approved.
Sure.
If, I think that essentially what you're wanting to see here, Mr. Halliburton, if they can show this screen right here. So this right here is Lot 1 that Mr. Barbie mentioned earlier, and the plat, and you can actually see that bold line that comes across, that's what you approved. Mr. Hooper doesn't even own that property, and so we don't have the ability to connect to the road back there. And so that was what was reviewed and approved and recorded, was to create that lot with the appendage going to that, I think it's actually an unnamed street stub, if I'm not mistaken. And I believe it has a name to that cross-hatched area there.
So Mr. Hooper does not own the area that would abut the appendage? Is that what you're saying?
He does not own, he does not own, see how this right here goes over? He does not own that strip.
According to the assessor's office, it's still owned by W. Bruce Hooper, but...
He's here, he's happy to say he does not own that. It's a...
It's part of the lot with the X on it?
Correct. It is part of that lot, and I believe it is an XY, or at least it was. And so I don't know why the, my guess is the, it was divested in the divorce and the registered office has not, a lot of times those deeds do not get updated during that time, but he does not control or own that.
So how did we approve it before if he didn't control or, or he did at the time based upon his marriage?
I think that she had to actually sign that plat, is that right? If I remember right, she actually had to sign that plat. And that, the appendage was added, that's where her water service is coming from, I think maybe even some gas service, things like that. And so all of that was part of cleaning up the divorce, essentially, because he retained the land around the house, and she got the house in the divorce.
So he owns Lots 2, 7, 8, and 9?
Yes, ma'am.
All the way back to the appendage?
He does.
And there's the, I've got the recorded plat pulled up, Mr. Halliburton, per your request, if, if they could go to my computer. Can we pull up my computer on the Planning Commissioners? There we go.
I see, so it went...
Lot 1.
It was like a, a Z shape to get to the...
Lot 1 had to have access to the utilities that are in Windsor Green subdivision, I guess? And so that's why we have the...
The existing water service was coming from that direction as well. I believe gas was coming from there as well, Ms. Jones.
So Lots, Lot 2 was a part of this plat and Lot 3. Lot 2, though, is still owned by Mr. Hooper?
Yes.
And Lot 3 is owned by, or only Lot 1 is not a part of this new plat that we're looking at?
That's correct, yes, ma'am.
And will Lots 2 and 7, 8, 9, or whatever, whatever they're named now, are they going to need, they'll have access to those same utilities on the back, or...
No, because that service was a private service, and so all of their services will come off of Segal Road. And so we have to install a couple of new fire hydrants along Segal, as well as some meters and sewer services along there as well, as part of this preliminary plat.
The new plat, I mean, it does still really have the ability to get to the connection if we needed to. It'd be one less lot, I guess.
Well, we don't have the ability to make that connection with this, because he does not control that property.
The one little strip at the back.
So if, I'm going to play devil's advocate here a minute. If the city is wanting him to do that, how are we asking him to somehow acquire that piece of property?
That's kind of what I was going, how do we make him acquire?
Yeah, that's what I'm not following.
So, so we, we made a concerted effort before, after this plat that was recorded was approved, but before it was recorded, we made a concerted effort before those lot lines were changed to work with the applicant to try to come to an agreement about that connection. But they, no, we were not able to, to come to an agreement on that. And that, we tried to do, so we've been talking with them for months and months and months before the plat that's on the screen before you was recorded, so before those lot lines were, were modified.
So, but based upon what we know now, how do we, how do we, how does the applicant adhere to the city's request? I get, does that make sense?
Yeah, it's, that's a good question, and I don't know that I have the answer right now.
So I think we made the decision when we approved the plat the last time, because if we left it with no way to connect, have that connection when we approved the plat last year, then we, as much as I'd like to, we can't really be sitting here asking for the connection this year. We already cut that off last year. But it's, and it's approved, so, you know, it's kind of like beating a dead horse. It's already done. But, you know, right now, we're left with approving the plat that's, that's here, and we don't have any, any ability to get to that connection, if that's what I'm, I'm hearing. Is that right?
I think this is a pretty easy decision. I'll make the, make the motion to approve the plat as presented without the connecting road, subject to all their staff comments.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't follow how we get to where the city's wanting to go, so I'm going to second the motion.
Motion and second, Ms. Jacob. Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye.
Okay, that's Item C. Next, we have Item D, which is the Hooper resubdivision of Lots 2 and 3. It's a final plat for eight lots on 17.86 acres, zoned RS15, located along Segal Road. W. Bruce Hooper is the developer. Mr. Barbie.
Good afternoon again. Before you next is the companion final plat to create the legal lots of record on the W. Bruce Hooper subdivision. It is, again, for a total... I just lost my page. Looks like a total of eight lots, all having access to Segal Road. Plat is generally in good condition, and we would request that any approval be made, subject to all staff comments.
So any questions regarding the final plat?
Throw or not, I'll make a motion that we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second, Ms. Jacob. Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye.
Okay. Next, we have Greystone, Section 2. It's a preliminary plat for three lots on 16.11 acres, zoned PRD, located along the west side of Double Springs Road, north of Veals Road. Meritage Homes is the developer. Ms. Smith.
Good afternoon, Commissioner. As you can see on the screen above, the location of the Greystone subdivision is north of Veals Road and west of Double Springs Road. It has several phases in its subdivision. Why, this is really sensitive. As you can see here in the above screenshot, we have already seen phases 1A and 1B in this particular project site. So now we're focusing on that area, Section 2, highlighted in yellow. And if you see in the top left-hand corner, this involves just the 49 single-family detached units that would all be in an HPR. that would all be in an HPR. As you can see on the screen itself, the improvements would only affect a portion of the area and break it into three separate lots of record. So, here you can see lot 46 involves all of these. Lot 45. And there's one more. It's hard to see it on this. So, there's three lots of record that would be included in this preliminary plat. At the same time, the applicant has also submitted for, and you'll see in your next item, the site plan review for it. But the plat does take into consideration the approved PRD, which has a berm and buffer landscaping along Double Springs Road that would be constructed with this subdivision. With that, if you have any questions, the applicant SEC Engineering is here. And here's an example of that buffer landscape that you would see along Double Springs Road. Other than that, it appears to be in good order. And staff recommends approval, subject to all staff comments.
So, this plat looks like it's got a huge wetland area.
It does. This particular one had to be modified a few times because the wetland areas that they thought could be converted out, some of them had to stay in their original configuration. So, yes, this one does have quite a few of those wetlands.
Chair, any further questions or comments?
I'd say this is the definition of low-density housing.
Yes, it is.
I'll make a motion we approve, subject to staff comments.
Second.
Motion and several seconds, Ms. Jacob.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay, next, we have Greystone, Section 2, the site plan for 49 single-family detached homes on three lots to become part of a horizontal property regime on 16.11 acres, zoned PRD, located along the west side of Double Springs Road, north of Veals Road. Meritage Homes developer.
Ms. Smith?
Thank you again, Chair Jones. As you can see on the attached page, this are all of the specifics for the layout of those HPR lots. And we did actually require and a turning template here to make sure that the cars can make these side-entry garages. You may recall this subdivision had some front-low garage products and side-entry garage project layouts. So, this particular one has those side-entry garages incorporated into the drawings. We will not see the elevations for this until they actually pull building permits on this particular project. But of course, they'll need to have the infrastructure in place with the project before they can go vertical on it. This particular area, as you can see in the zoomed-in section, has some stormwater detention basins. This is also a subdivision that is all on step fields, of which most of those were in Section 1 and 1A being constructed. There are no new step fields that are in this Section 2 of their project. And other than that, it looks like... You may not have seen the amenity center yet for this project. But in future phases, we do anticipate seeing that. Our current PRD phasing plan does require that at 50% of the build-out... There we go. 50% of the build-out, they will be required to put in this amenity center here. You've previously approved the kiosk and the parking area. But we would see this come in prior to any building permits being issued for Phases 3 and 4 of the subject site, but not at this time. With that, we believe it's generally in good order. And staff recommends approval, subject to all staff comments.
So, I'm sorry. I may have misunderstood. You made a comment about we wouldn't see the design until the permit... The permits are pulled?
So, because they're single-family detached, the program book has all of the elevations in it.
Okay.
So, we do not require for single-family detached those individual pages coming in. But as they're pulling their permits, they'll be required to show where it is on the property.
Okay. I get it.
So, essentially, you've already looked at them during the zoning process.
Yeah.
And then, we will make sure during the individual building permit review, when the builders submit the building permits, that those elevations are consistent with what y'all reviewed and approved and what City Council reviewed and approved during the zoning.
Makes sense. Thank you.
If there are any other questions, I move for approval, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Jacob.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay. Next, we have Hidden River Estates, Section 4, site plan for 134 single-family attached dwelling units, townhomes, within 18 buildings on 13.4 acres, zoned PUD, located along Rebecca John's Drive, north of Cason Trail. Hidden River Holding Company, LLC is the developer. Ms. Smith?
Good afternoon, Chair Jones, Commission. So, you may recall Hidden Rivers Project. You've seen many, many phases. I've taken a couple of them to you. But this particular one is considered Section 4, which is located here, just south of the last project you approved in this location and just north of this one. So, that would have been Section 3. And previously approved was 1A in this particular location, the single-family detached lots. So, with this current phasing, we only have one last phase section, which will be Section 2 and Phase 5 for the northern amenity center, as well as additional cottage units. In this particular project site... We are looking at these units here, which include the River Row, which are those that are directly adjacent to the stream areas. And that includes three eight-plex buildings. Those are the ones that have two-car garages, two-car surface parking in front of those. And then, the villas directly behind it, those are the smaller, tighter units. And those really range from a mix of three plexes up to, I believe, nine or 10 plexes, depending on how the layout is for the site. This particular one, there was a little bit of a difference with the unit mix for the project versus the PRD. But when we did look at it, we made sure that all the parking provisions were being met with the subdivision. So, when we look at the entirety of the site, we're looking at it phase by phase by phase for those parking spaces. So, when we approved Phase 3, we knew at that time that these 29 spaces that were going to be built directly adjacent within Section 3 would be necessary for the parking for the villas in this Phase 4. So, we wanted to make sure that that was clearly identified on both the Section 3 and Section 4 maps. And these 29 units are needed to accommodate that for the amount of parking that's needed for the villas. This particular program development book has 1.1 parking spaces per bedroom. So, they have two-bedroom and three-bedroom mixes. So, as staff went ahead and pulled all those numbers together, which there were quite a few of them, there was 292 of those parking spaces that are located directly adjacent to the majority of these villa parking spaces. And then, once you add these additional 29, we're at a surplus of one parking space based on that 1.1 unit per acre, which was approved in the plan development book. Additionally, in this particular phase, the program book did call out for a formal open space area, which you can see here designated number 26. And it's roughly equal distance between the future amenity center and the current amenity center that is out on the project site for the long term. With that, the applicant has proposed to have a walking trail, some benches, and a grass area. And in talking to them, staff did feel that they needed some kind of shade added because it is a long section. The applicant was agreeable to doing something in that section, but did not want to put that down at this point in time for that formal open space area and may have some additional information to add today. Other than that, the other thing that we did look at and we clarified, we went out to the project site to better understand how they are handling trash. Trash on the project site is once-a-week pickup via trash bags. So, people store their trash bags. The valet comes in, picks up their trash, so that you don't have any cart storage to be concerned with within this area. None of these parking spots are within garages. They're all surface parking. So, we wanted to make sure to understand how the trash was being handled for that project. And then, lastly, HVAC units. They do have... Basically, all of these units are facing onto greenway sections. So, they park adjacent to the property, come in through kind of a gated area and then into their kind of rear entry door. And the HVAC units are located in that area. So, they do anticipate doing exactly what's done in their current Villas project, which has kind of like bulb landscaping that's adjacent. But there are some cases where the HVAC unit is sitting a couple of feet off of the sidewalks that are through there. And so, we just wanted to point out that feature of the project site. And reviewing that, staff did go ahead. And again, we just wanted to make sure you were aware of those nuances in the project site. And we would recommend that Planning Commission approve the site plan, subject to meeting all staff comments, including those 5, 6, and 7. And here, I believe, the waste collection one, after understanding what that was, item 7 can come off regarding those sections. And then, we would ask that items 5 and 6 still maintain in place. With that, if we have any additional information that the applicant would like to add or you would have questions of, he's here for any of those questions you might have.
So, you're still leaving on there what you're saying, 5 and 6? You're fine with the trash, the way that was working, once you saw that?
Yes. So, what they're doing out in the field is they actually have their own fenced yard area that's closest to the, I'll say, the back parking areas. So, they're able to put that in their own yard that's not visible by anybody else and do that trash service pickup once a week.
So, it's just like a little fenced area that is opposed to having like a cart, a garbage cart in there?
Yes. So, I'll call it, you're kind of entering the rear patio from the parking area. So, their front doors or their areas that they're enjoying the green space are facing the greenways. And so, this is kind of their back of house. So, it's something that you're not seeing from the parking areas. And that's the main thing that we're looking at is where are you putting those trash until the pickup day?
And it is just a trash bag that goes in the fenced area? And...
But it's fenced in? So, like the dogs aren't coming along and getting it or things like that?
Yeah, we use a... Brian Burns, we use a service that comes every Monday. Most people, they can either pull their cart out by the door. And now, everything has to be in a bag or it doesn't get taken. So, they pull the bags out, put a new bag in, then it goes back in the same day. You don't ever see a trash can unless somebody goes on vacation or forgets one or something. So, it's worked out much better than dumpsters ever would work.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Thank you, Mr. Burns. And did you address the 5 and 6 that you wanted addressed? I mean, are they still working on that?
So, 5 and 6 would still be there. And those would just be notes that would be added to the plan sets.
So, still working on the screening for the HVAC units?
Which we anticipate. So, as you're looking at this landscape plan, you can see there's some plantings that are occurring basically on both sides of the HVAC. They just need to clarify that on their plan set.
Any other questions, comments?
There are none. I'll make a motion we approve, subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and a second, Ms. Jacob.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Solis?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay. Next, we are moving on to new business. First item is a zoning application for approximately 0.57 acres, located along East Vine Street, to be rezoned from RS-8 and CCO to PRD and CCO. It's the enclave at Vine Street, PRD. Big Red Holdings, LLC is the applicant. Ms. Smith?
Last item for me this afternoon, Chair Jones, Commission. So, as you can see on the above screen, we show in the aerial view the existing location of the proposed project. Currently, it is 542 East Vine Street with an existing single-family residence or duplex on the current lot. Adjacent to the project site is an existing PRD that you may recall we were actually out in the field at, that has seven units. And then, adjacent to that, another PRD that was recently approved with five units. This particular project site is currently zoned RS-8 and has RS-8 zoning on the adjacent project sites next to the project itself. And then, you'll notice an RM-16 is really the south half of the block. That's for that project area. And looking at this particular project, they're looking at four units in total on... Double check. On .57 acres, which equates to a 24,631 square-foot lot. The density on that particular parcel is at 7.09 units to the acre, which is a less density than those two adjacent project sites that we've approved. And you can see here, these are really one-and-a-half-story buildings. Those other adjacent projects are two-story buildings. The current zoning map, as you can see in the top right-hand corner, again, is that RS-8. And you can see where the other adjacent RS-8 properties are. And then, if you look at the map on the bottom right-hand of the screen in that orange color, that represents mixed-form housing, which our comprehensive general plan that we adopted last year had designated this area and a lot of these CCO areas that allows for everything from an RS-10 down to a RD duplex-type zoning and also includes RSA 1, 2, and 3, as well as planned developments with that particular designation. In looking at the adjacent sites, again, they're mostly single-family detached with one-story buildings. The bottom left-hand corner is the property that is directly adjacent to the project. And then, here is the proposed site layout. This particular lot is a very wide lot. It's about 142 feet across the front. And then, the depth on it is about 172 feet in the depth. When they are looking at this, it really functions very much like a duplex. But because there are four units on one lot of record, we consider this a four-family breakdown. So, they propose that front one to actually, at this front line, have a 15-foot setback and not have any encroachment of that front porch into the front area. On the back side, we do have a 20-foot MBSL or setback line. And there, they are asking to allow that front porch to encroach as allowed by our current zoning code, the five feet into that rear section, which still gives them about 15 feet of space outside of that porch area. As far as parking, the layout here is a little bit different, mostly because it's a very fat, wide lot. They're proposing two, three-car garages towards the back of the property. So, that's six car spaces there, six car spaces that are surface parked for the units, and then, two guest parking up at the very front. They are looking at having a fence separation between them and the RM-12, 16 to the south. And then, they are looking at some fencing along... And then they are looking at some fencing along, between the residential, single-family to the east and their property with a lower fence in the front so that you still have a very open feel, so like a four-foot fence that'll block any of the headlights for the cars. And then a taller six-foot fence in this area, and again, a four-foot fence here so that you have trash storage separate from the garage space itself. This particular exhibit here kind of breaks it out a little bit easier, so you can see where...
Can we have a question real quick, please?
Go back.
So there's four units and six parking garages. How are we splitting these garage spaces up?
That's where I'm going. Excellent question. So here you can see, unit one has two parking spaces. So for this unit, they'll have those two, and they will have a space out here. Unit two would only have a one-car garage and two surface spaces. So each of the units have three spaces that are designated to them. It'll just depend on, all of them, though, are three, very different, right? So when you look at it from a standpoint of what that layout looks like, the garages that are proposed have three individual doors. So you can mix and match that however you want as property sales are going through. So when you would look at this, you may have one that owns these two portions and are assigned those two. And the adjacent one would only have one garage space. But each one has three bedrooms, which requires three parking stalls. But each applicant will either have one surface and two garage spaces, or the opposite, two garage spaces and one surface. So it gives them a little bit more flexibility, but that's how the applicant had decided to propose how that would work.
So are the garages electrified? And if so, are they on the same meter as the unit they belong to? Or is the garage on a separate meter from the unit?
That I would probably have to defer to the applicant. And I don't know that they've thought through that as of yet. So here, the main thing we were looking at is when we have a, what's called an accessory unit, or, excuse me, an accessory structure, the way our current code works, if this was straight zoning, this would have to be 60 feet behind the right-of-way, and it would have to be at least five feet off the property line. So this is kind of following that same form, if you're on a single-family lot, how you might be able to do a detached garage. But again, the difference here is the way that they have it split. Now, if that's something that you'd like to see, you know, different, I'm sure that the applicant would be willing to address that. But I'm going to try to cut it short, just really trying to give you an idea of what we're looking at for our July 10 public hearing. And again, what it does do is that here are your building line setbacks that are being proposed. And when they're looking at any of the exceptions to our standards based on the comparative district, they are only looking at the rear yard porches encroaching 70 feet into the rear setback, allowing a five-foot modified planting area along this frontage between it and the residential from a 15-foot to a five-foot, to not have base of building plantings along these sides of the units. And then lastly, eliminate the perimeter planting requirements, which would also be along this frontage for trees. So that's what they are requesting in their development. And currently, we're not asking for any action today. But should you want us to bring anything to the public hearing, let us know that today so we can make sure to address that. And then we're asking to set the public hearing on this one for July 10.
So is the thought process of not having the landscape buffer on, I'll call it the left-hand side, because of the vegetation that's already there?
Hello, I'm Brian Grover with SEC. You're talking about the west side, left side, you're saying?
That's, yes, that's.
So the reason the perimeter was kind of excluded from that is we had a kind of modified planting plan to kind of focus that landscape in the center of it. That's why you see all the trees towards the center. But if that's a concern, we can definitely put that perimeter planting back in. I think with those three trees there, we're about two or three trees short on that side anyway. So if that is an issue, we can add that back in or remove that request for that side of the project.
I mean, I haven't seen this. I don't, you know, I don't know what the landscaping looks like now. I would think we would have required that in the past, you know, on a development like this in the past. But if we're just duplicating what's already there, then, I mean, maybe there's some merit in the request, I guess is the best way to say it.
Directly to the west is the open space for the adjacent planned development. And so we can definitely add those in there. I don't know for sure if they added those for that last planned development, but we can take a look at that, and I can have an answer for you at the hearing for sure.
Did you want to say something, Matthew?
I was just going to say, I think, I think what, and Mr. Grover can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think what he's trying to do is kind of not, not get out of necessarily landscaping the development, but just kind of proposing an alternative landscape plan that fits more with this, you know, four-unit development as opposed to our, you know, our more, you know, rigid suburban-type, you know, one tree every, every so often, and just trying to kind of tailor it more toward, towards the type of development that it is. Is that an accurate statement, Mr. Grover?
Very. Thank you.
I mean, I'm just one voice on this board, so I just, it just seems a little odd to me, but that's, I mean, why, I mean, you got parking garages and you got, you got a landscaping buffer all the way down on the east side, you know, so anyway.
I think the garage situation is really strange. I'm not saying that's a deciding factor for me, but it's an odd situation.
Are you saying that there's not vegetation on the west side now? That was...
If there are existing vegetation on the properties that sits now, I do not know for sure.
Yeah. What about the adjacent property?
I don't know if they have their perimeter plantings in, but like I said, that's not likely.
Can you take a look at?
We actually saw it when we went out to the field. And so here, they did not have a fence, but they did have heavy plantings to where you could not really easily get through it to get to this other adjacent side. And what was just being mentioned, their formal open space is right in this section. So they do have some fencing, wrought iron fencing, along that portion of the property line. But when they were looking at, I think their focus, and they're not required to do formal open space for this particular project because it's only four units, but they are providing this kind of common open space area that they're hoping that the residents over time will figure out what it is that they'd like to do in that area. But they're not required to do it. They just wanted to have that as being another amenity for the four dwellers.
Also, you're showing a six-foot fence on the rear, is that right?
Correct.
And the rest of the perimeter on the west side is a four-foot fence? On the west side of the property?
On the west side, next to the adjacent development, there would not be a fence on that side. There would be a fence on the east side next to the...
Okay, maybe I'm talking the east side. But it's a four-foot fence, right?
Four-foot fence is proposed in the front, kind of six-foot.
There's no fence on that side.
No fence, right?
Right. That's why I was talking about the landscape buffer.
And if we can go to my screen, that, this doesn't give you a great picture, but it shows you kind of the interface between the east side of the adjacent townhome development and the property here that's proposed to be developed. So it looks like maybe there are some existing mature trees along that property line. But whose, whose property those are on, I don't know.
Right. I mean, again, I'm just one voice. I just think it makes sense that there's some sort of buffer there when you've got more, in my view, more than a single-family dwelling, you know, two single-family dwellings that are next to each other. But I'm just one.
Yeah, I see what you're saying.
Yeah.
I would agree with you.
Can I ask the insurance professionals a question about this garage situation? I don't know why it bothers me so bad. How would the insurance companies cover these garages? They're detached garages, but attached to somebody else's garage?
It probably would be set up like these horizontal properties, regime pieces. And there may be that there's certain common elements that have to be part of a...
HOA?
Yes, sir. Yeah.
So do we have that covered as far as a reserve on an HOA or something like that?
So if we do have, this would be required to be a horizontal property regime, as you stated, and there would be an HOA established for this. And all members would be required to be a part of that HOA.
And Mr. Wright, it sounded like you're wanting additional information on, on whether those structures would be in common area, how the, how the meters would be set up. And I think those are things that Mr. Grover and his client can probably work through between now and the public hearing.
I mean, in essence, if they're dated garages, and let's say, unit number one, if they're not independently wired directly to the unit, unit number one decides, hey, I don't need an extra garage anymore, and they want to sell it to unit number three, I mean, is that possible, or how are these things set up?
The, I believe, and will confirm, but the horizontal property regime will be set up to where the garages will be assigned to the units. And those units, once assigned, or once those garages assigned to those units, those garages wouldn't change ownership. They would be associated with that unit specifically.
Mr. Hankins?
Yes, sir.
Would that be something that could be, codified is not the right word, but memorialized the assignment of those garages in the CCRs for the development?
There's real estate all over the country that's set up just like this, and people sell their garages. So unless it's codified in the deed, they could sell their garages, unless they're direct wired to the unit.
Yeah, I, I think it's going to, it would require probably some elaboration from the applicant at the next meeting as far, because I've kind of heard there'll be, you know, that it's set in stone that one, that one goes with one, two goes with one. But then I thought also heard that it might depend on sales and how it goes that way. So I think it'll be incumbent upon the applicant to present, you know, in detail what they want that setup to be. And if, if it is going to be locked into place that, you know, this unit gets two, this unit gets one, then I think that can be codified, probably should be codified, both in the plan book and the CCRs.
To, to make this a little bit easier, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to mess with your plan or project, but why not do two four-unit garages and do the surface parking in the middle of them? So two garages, so the garage for units one and two are directly across from them, garages for units three and four directly across from them, and your surface area parking is in between?
So one of the main, we have those so far back because we're trying to keep that 60 feet away from the front per the regular accessory structure. If that is something that, as Planning Commission, you were more comfortable with having those more directly across from the units themselves, we could look at doing that. And I would have to discuss with the applicant, see if they want to go to a four-car garage.
Well, my only thought process is that would really tidy up who gets what garage and where it's located, is my thought process.
Yeah, I agree.
Because I just, I mean, I agree with Sean, or, excuse me, Councilman Wright, I, I just think this is going to be a cluster when you go to, when you go to sell, but that's not up to me, so.
Absolutely. That's something I can discuss with applicant. We can have definitely a more refined plan for how the parking is going to work with these units prior to that next meeting.
And if, you know, if, if you go that route, I'd be careful about that, what the garage looks like on the side that's going to face the street, you know, because you don't want it just to be like a garage.
And Mr. Halliburton, I think that was one of the reasons why we kind of steered him to push those back was to, so that the side of the garage wouldn't be so prominent. But I think there are probably some design solutions.
It looks good.
And Ms. Smith has done a great job of, of...
So this is what would be facing the...
I think that looks, yeah, yeah.
So is that, does it, something like that, asking for that, where it is against that 60-foot, it still just would be approved if we, if they did it like that as a part of this planned development? It wouldn't also have to go to BZA to get a...
No, no. With the, with the planned development, they can build in exceptions into the pattern book, and the BZA really doesn't have any authority over planned developments.
Okay.
We wouldn't pass that.
You wouldn't, yeah.
Well, the, the planned development process allows you to build in exceptions without meeting all of the justification criteria that the BZA would...
I think that might be a...
Without having, without you having to go through the, to the iron fist of Mr. Halliburton.
Add that extra, extra step in there, but I think that, that sounds like a great idea. And, and I think, you know, just like you're saying, I mean, there are detached garages all over the place on all different, you know, even old Georgetown condos have totally detached garages. But you sell the unit and you specify the detached garage as part of it and sell them together.
Right.
And there must be something in their restrictions or something that says you cannot sell your garage versus some downtown condos in Nashville, yeah, you can sell your parking spot if you want to. But that's, again, must be set out in their restrictions and in the deed. So I think there's a way to do it. And whichever way y'all wanted it to go, I would think you don't want to be selling these garages.
Well, the other thing about...
They want to go with the unit.
The other thing, if they can sell the garages, then you have a parking issue, because then you have units that don't have the correct amount of parking.
Yeah, I think they'd have to set it up where they couldn't separately sell the garage. It would have to stay with the unit, I think is the way we would want to see that to approve.
More with the applicant, to have that spelled out.
And Mr. Volney, again, to your, to your point, too, if, if this is something that we would want the city to have an enforcement mechanism over to make sure that future owners didn't sell, the city would either need to be made a party to those CCRs, or, like I said, it would need to be included as a condition in the plan, or at least spelled out in the plan book, that the, that the garages would remain with the, tied to the unit that they're sold with.
I still think Mr. Solis' idea is the best idea, however we can fit it on there. Make it two-car garages for each unit and make them set, just specific, not this one gets that one and maybe that one.
Yeah.
And I'll make the positive, I like the look of this.
I do, too.
Yeah, I like the look of it.
So that there's...
Yeah, it looks great.
I just think we need to work on the layout a little bit.
A little bit the garage situation cleaned up a little bit.
And the buffer, but the look of this, I really like.
I agree. I make a motion to set the public hearing for July 10.
Second.
Motion, second, Ms. Jekko.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye.
Thank you, Commission.
Okay, our next item B is an annexation petition and plan of services for approximately 0.5 acres located along West Ridge Drive. Alcorn Properties LLC is the applicant. Mr. Donovan, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Chair Jones. The annexation before you today was requested by the property owners, Alcorn Properties and Vetris Cove Homeowners Association. They've submitted the petition to the city for that annexation. This annexation area includes the portions of two properties on the south side of West Ridge Drive, as well as a small portion of West Ridge Drive right-of-way. The portion of West Ridge Drive right-of-way will be before the County Road Commission on June 24th to obtain their consent for annexation into the city. Both of the parcels involved are currently vacant. And the total annexation area is about a half of an acre of land with... area is about a half of an acre of land with, that includes .08 acres of right-of-way of West Ridge Road. So this property also has a companion zoning application that'll be the next item you take up, that would add the project, the properties to Veterans Cove PRD, which would allow three attached single-family homes in the annexation area. So the annexation study area is within the city's urban growth boundary. The subject parcels are contiguous to the city limits on the northern and eastern side of the property, and this area is also within the city's service infill area. Staff is currently working with other city departments to prepare a plan of service, which we'll have ready for you at the public hearing. So Planning Commission will need to discuss the annexation and petition and plan of service and schedule a public hearing. Due to new state law, which requires additional notice time, staff is recommending the public hearing take place on August 7th.
And is that because of the county portion that's in there? I mean-
No, ma'am. They have recently made a change where there's a 21-day notice period prior to a public hearing that now has to be fulfilled, and Mr. Hankins or Mr. Blomley can provide further detail.
So item A, what's the difference there?
Well, item A is a zoning request only. This is, it's just for annexation.
This is just for annexation.
And it was passed by the General Assembly this past session, this winter, signed into law by Governor Lee, and it goes into effect on July the 1st. This will be the first annexation, fortunately or unfortunately for Mr. Alcorn, that falls under the new state law. All existing annexations that were in process, like we have one before City Council on tomorrow night, and then one that will be going before City Council in July, those are, fall under the old process, but, so the new state law, among a number of other requirements that it places on the municipality to fulfill for annexations, requires both 21-day notice for the Planning Commission public hearing and 21-day notice for the City Council public hearing for all annexations. So that is going to elongate the amount of time that it takes for annexations to get through the process, and so we met Development Services, met with Legal last week to discuss how we were going to implement it, because it also mandates signs of a certain size and signs of a certain height off the ground, and all of which is going to, is going to change how we, how we do things for annexations. It even requires that we, that we post a copy of the resolution on the property and in several places in the city. So it's added a number of requirements that we are working through how to, how to implement those, but due to the amount of notice time, scheduling it for the July 10th meeting would not comply with the amount of time the new state law requires.
Interesting.
Learn something new every day.
Yes, ma'am.
So we're looking for an August 7th public hearing date unless anyone has any questions?
Second.
Motion and second, Ms. Jaco.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Salas.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye. Okay.
And Madam Chair, I'll mention that I'll also email all the Planning Commission members and all the City Council members a copy of that new state law, so that y'all can be aware of that.
Read up on it. We will. Okay. Item C will be the companion zoning application for approximately 0.42 acres located along West Ridge Drive, to be zoned PRD. It's Veterans Cove PRD, simultaneous with annexation. Alcorn Properties LLC is the applicant. Mr. Donovan.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Alcorn Properties LLC is requesting rezoning the annexation area we just discussed to Veterans Cove PRD. This property is on the south side of West Ridge Drive and contains two properties. One of them is very small and it's a hundredth of an acre, and the other parcel is .4 acres in size. The Veterans Cove PRD is 97 attached single-family residential units and 23 buildings, consistent of three, four, and five-unit buildings that will be sold via horizontal property regime. Currently, Phase 1, which is to the east of the proposed rezoning area, is undergoing vertical construction, and Phase 2 of the project is currently having site preparation done. This, the amendment will add one three-unit building to the western edge of the property and change the unit count from 90, its current 95 units to 97 units. The two-unit increase is due to one unit. Unit 67 was unbuildable due to constraints on the site, so that's the reason you're only seeing an increase for two units overall. All right, and this phase, the amendment is going to be called Phase 3. It could be built as an independent phase or concurrently with Phase 2. Let me get to the site, and I'll walk you through, went past it. All right. So this phase is going to include a sidewalk that runs from Soldiers' Armory Drive to the western termus of the property. There will also be a fence and a type-C buffer along the southern and western property lines that's a continuation of a type-C buffer that's already there. The developers add in a six-foot-tall privacy fence along that as well, on the, that'll terminate along that western edge. Other than that, the other elements of the pattern book are remaining the same as the remainder of Veterans Cove PRD architecture. Other bulk requirements will remain in place. The lone exception that is in the pattern book for the remainder of the site as well is there's a reduction from the 35-foot setback for a front-facing garage down to 25. That's going to remain consistent in this phase of the development as well. So this is going to look, you know, just like the portions of the development that are already under construction within Veterans Cove. So as far as adjacent properties, just to the north of this is River's Edge subdivision, Section 4, it's zoned RS10, a single-family residential. To the east of the subject site is Veterans Cove PRD Phase 1. To the south is an existing single-family residence that's zoned RM, medium-density residential in the county, and then to the west is a two-family dwelling unit that's zoned RM in the county as well. So the future land-use plan for this site calls it out as suburban residential, which has an intended density range of one to four units per acre. The Veterans Cove PRD doesn't, is inconsistent with that land-use designation. It allows 7.1 units per acre. However, we do have a transition policy that I'll discuss here in a moment. We, staff, noticed that Veterans Cove PRD currently, the whole development is called a suburban residential. We think that was an error in the code-in process during the future land-use plan. That was intended to be auto-urban residential, AUR, which would allow a product like Veterans Cove to be there, or would support zoning of a project. For that reason, staff believes that this is an appropriate use of the transition policy to allow the existing development to be extended beyond the land-use boundary. Staff would recommend the use of the transition policy to continue the AR uses, including the townhomes along the front edge of West Ridge Road, to create a transition to the duplexes that are in the county to the west and the single-family residential that would fall further to the west and then be, again, just to the north of the subject property as well. So Planning Commission will need to discuss the rezoning request and schedule a public hearing. This one, too, is going to be affected by the new state law, requiring additional notice time. Staff recommends the Planning Commission schedule the public hearing for August 7th.
Okay. Any questions?
So moved. Second.
Motion and second. Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Salas.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye. Okay. And item D, we have a street renaming to rename a segment of Butler Drive north of Joby Jackson Parkway to Kenny Pipe Court. The City of Murfreesboro Administration Department is the applicant. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and if the Cable Department could pull up my computer on the Planning Commissioner's screens. Thank you. So we have a street naming request before you for an approximately 3,300-foot-long segment of Butler Drive. As you all probably know, Butler Drive is currently being realigned to get its intersection with Joby Jackson Parkway further to the west. So the city is heading up this construction project, south of Joby Jackson Parkway, as a part of the Buckeyes Development. Elum Road is likewise being realigned further to the west. Buckeyes will be, will need to complete that realignment before it starts going vertical with its construction, but ultimately, that intersection of Joby Jackson Parkway and Butler Drive and Elum Road will all line up at a future signalized intersection, and it will get additional separation from the I-24 interchange ramps to create a safer intersection, especially upon signalization. So because the existing southernmost segment of Butler Drive that's in the blue shading on the map before you will be, intersect with the realigned Butler Drive as a separate street, it warrants the renaming of this street, since the Butler Drive street name will continue along the realigned Butler Drive. The remnant of Butler Drive that we are proposing to rename will ultimately terminate in a cul-de-sac before it reaches Joby Jackson Parkway. So that existing intersection with Joby Jackson Parkway, where my cursor is, will go away, and there will be a cul-de-sac there. So with that being terminated, and intersecting with the new Butler Drive, it warrants the renaming of that street. After consulting with city administration, city administration has nominated, for the Planning Commission's consideration, the street name of Kenny Pipe Court. Kenny Pipe and Supply is a Nashville-based plumbing supply business, and if you see where my cursor is right now, they have about 104,000-square-foot facility located on this segment of Butler Drive that would be affected. Kenny Pipe and Supply has a number of locations in Tennessee, Alabama, and Georgia, and as a, as one of the community's corporate citizens, especially one that will be affected by this street name change, administration has nominated Kenny Pipe Court as the new name for this, for this street. As far as who would be affected by, or about how many addresses would be affected, there are six addresses that would be affected by this street renaming, and that would include Kenny Pipe and Supply. There's a daycare center directly adjacent to Kenny Pipe and Supply, and there are four single-family residences. We're also holding up, addressing the solid waste transfer facility that the city is developing until such time as this street gets renamed, but the site plan for that facility was approved by the Planning Commission, or approved several months ago, and we'll address that upon the renaming of the street. So there will be a future additional development on this, on this segment. The majority of the affected addresses are in the unincorporated county. We've been in contact with the county planning department, and we would coordinate the street renaming and the address changes with the county. The road construction for the realignment, the opening date is scheduled for February the 25th, or excuse me, February of 2025. It may be February 25th of 2025, I'm not sure, but according to the engineering department, there's a possibility that it may be ahead of schedule. So we would work to coordinate the renaming of the street, as well as the readdressing of the properties on it, to coordinate with the, with the completion of that, of that road construction project. While we don't have a codified process requiring a public hearing for street renaming, it's historically what we have, what we have done, such as, for example, when we renamed Mercury Boulevard a few years ago. So we would recommend a public hearing date for this renaming of July the 10th, and the Planning Commission, according to our subdivision regulations, has authority over, over street names, so it would be a final vote at, at the Planning Commission level, and then if the Planning Commission approved the renaming, then staff would work on implementation. Be happy to answer any questions.
I'm just going to make a comment. I don't know about naming a street after a business that 20 years down the road, if Kenny Pipe's out of business or somebody else buys it, and then you perpetually have a road named Kenny Pipe where our company may not be, for instance, in Manchester, there's a Sears &amp; Roebuck Way. I mean, nobody even knows what Sears &amp; Roebuck is now, so I don't know if, I like Kenny Pipe Supply, I mean, they're a great company, but I don't, I'm not, I don't know if I'm down with naming a street name after them forever.
Well, I would just say that then they could rename Sears &amp; Roebuck, just like we renamed Mercury Boulevard, I mean, down the line. I don't know, I kind of thought this might have been a, the council may have come up with the pipe as a way to, I'm sure it's a huge undertaking for them to change their address and the number of employees they have and the number of vendor contacts they have and-
I mean, the daycare was there first, so should we name the road after the daycare?
I don't believe they have quite as many.
I'm just being-
Yeah, I know.
Chase Salas Drive.
Yeah, Chase Salas Drive.
Yeah.
I'm going to make a motion that we set a public hearing for July 10th, and we can vote on it then.
Second.
Absolutely.
See what the public outcry is.
We have a motion and a second, Ms. Jaco.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Salas.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye. Okay, moving on to staff reports and other business. We have an ordinance amendment to amend the city's food truck ordinance. The City of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant. And Mr. Acuera, welcome back.
Thank you, Chair Jones. Excited to present this item. This is something that staff has been working on for quite a while in preparation for a lot of the kind of trends and cultural changes that have been happening around Murfreesboro. This is something that we wanted to be proactive in addressing. So this item, for this portion of the agenda, the city's planning department in conjunction with the legal department, Parks and Recreation, Fire and Rescue Department, and Building and Codes have been working on proposed amendments to Murfreesboro City Code regarding food trucks. These proposed amendments aim to make the process much more efficient and more transparent in the permitting process, as well as just aiming to make the process much more easier to understand for vendors, for event organizers, as well as city departments when we're communicating these standards. There has been some, again, a little bit of confusion, interpretation, and when we're addressing these to vendors, whether it be Kona Ice or somebody who's doing a hot dog cart, it's something that has been we, at the front, the front count of the planning department and Building and Codes have been running into, and so we want to be able to be proactive in addressing some of these gaps. And so this is not a comprehensive, this is not something that's going to change drastically the ordinance, but this is something really to address these gaps and some of the little bit of confusion, just really addressing these opportunities. We want to be able to address with these vendors that are coming in from out of state sometimes, even, you know, from other locations throughout the state, and so whether it be Knoxville, Clarksville, Lebanon, we want to be able to ensure that we're communicating this, and our process is easier, because right now, you know, there's a growing number of food trucks, and so we want to be able to ensure we're acting on this opportunity. And so the city hosted a public outreach meeting in the city council chambers on May 6th to present the ordinance amendment to a group of community stakeholders, and we received some general feedback, we received some generally positive feedback with it. There was about 15 members that were there that discussed. We had a lot, a number of food truck owners that came to discuss as well as- We had a lot, a number of food truck owners that came to discuss as well as the Franklin Fruit Tree people that regularly host Friday Night Market. They were there as well to kind of just discuss and get an understanding of what's being proposed. And so, a draft of the proposed amendment is included in your Planning Commission agenda for review. Staff requests the Planning Commission to discuss this proposed amendment and provide the feedback to staff. Because the food truck ordinance is regulated by the Murfreesboro City Code and not contained within the zoning ordinance, no, there's no need for a formal recommendation from Planning Commission. There's no need to vote on that. But what we're looking at is if you review this and you see that your general agreement with these proposed amendments, what we're asking is a vote of support for these amendments so that we can prepare this for Murfreesboro City Council. And so, I'm going to walk you through a quick presentation, kind of just discussing where this originated, why this emerged, why we're presenting this to you today. Again, we had a public meeting. Staff agreed that we want to present this to you all so you can become educated on it as we're seeing this more and more throughout the county, I mean, the city. And so, just going to highlight it real quickly, not going to take too long on this, but really want to discuss first with this ordinance, what prompted this effort. This is a popular site that I use. I think a lot of the city staff uses as well. This is Street Food Finder. This is a growing, popular trend in our community and in Nashville. Food truck culture is growing. As you can see here with this, this is just a snapshot of what we've seen in our community. There are a number of vendors operating throughout the community. Cool Beans Coffee is one vendor that's been operating outside MMC Hospital. They've seen a lot of great traffic. Jay is a really great guy. And then you see other vendors like Fatty Matty's Pizza who go to World Outreach Church and are regularly in attendance for those events. And so, it's a growing culture. It's something that's been emerging here, popular in the middle Tennessee area. But what also prompted this was really the challenges with the permitting process and getting, communicating to these vendors those standards. We've been having issues with vendors putting up tables, chairs, and other additional structures for customers. They've been operating on unapproved parcels like gravel lots, grass lots, and that's not permitted. And the other thing, too, is making these operations permanent. You know, with the Murfreesboro food truck ordinance, this is meant to be a document that allows vendors to set up and, you know, then to the general population, but in a sense, that makes it mobile. We want you to do this in a mobile operation so that you can have success but be able to graduate into a brick-and-mortar location to be able to invest in the community. So, still kind of wanting to make sure, you know, we're communicating that, that this is not to be permanent. The other challenge with that was the language barrier. Myself and Maria Ruin and Building &amp; Codes, sometimes we're having these difficulties with some Spanish speakers, Haitian speakers, Vietnamese speakers, those that come in, and they're not understanding that, oh, I did not know I was allowed to do this. That's one barrier that we've run into, so we're seeking to address that with that. But also, a part of the communication barrier with vendors, the language barrier, communication between the departments, this is a very big part of this ordinance amendment, is understanding so that way, all the departments, Building &amp; Codes, Planning, Fire, Rescue, we can all communicate to these vendors what is required of them, what approvals they need. So, when we understood, really, the challenges for it, we took a look first at the research, a lot of the development standards from other cities. Ian, who was our previous planning intern, helped with this effort to show what other cities were doing in our state. What was Memphis, Knoxville, Nashville, Chattanooga, communities in North Carolina, other communities out west in Texas, what were they doing? How did they regulate their food trucks? And what were they doing to improve community understanding? And we found a lot of good, helpful information relating to permitting, fees, educational materials, and how they enforce their ordinance. So, revealing those communities, we took a look back then at our current process. And I've included just a little, simple application for you all to see currently what is required. They have to get approval from Murfreesboro Fire Rescue. They have to go through the Rutherford County Health Department, get their approval. They compile all the necessary documentation and bring those approvals to the city for our review. So, they would come up to the planning department, and they'd bring a paper copy of everything. We would review it and approve of it. They would then go on to Building &amp; Codes where they give one final review and approval, and they are given a copy of their permit so they can begin selling for that year. And so, understanding who's all involved was the biggest part of it, understanding our current process. And so, we had to rope them all in. We wanted Building &amp; Codes to sit down with planning. We wanted Fire, Parks and Rec, and the legal department to all be a part of this effort because this process touches all these departments. Murfreesboro Fire Rescue is looking at the safety of these trucks, of these vehicles. Rutherford County Health Department is looking at these facilities to see, are these sanitary? Are these safe for vending? Are these vendors ensuring that these environments that they're selling food out of, are they sanitary? And so, we had to ensure that we were getting all the correct people involved. And Parks and Rec and everybody that was involved was able to provide their feedback and their role and their responsibilities of what they were seeing. And so, it was truthfully a really great experience because we were able to talk with Mike Solier and Christie Graves at the Rutherford County Health Department about what they were seeing, and that helped educate us in our role and understanding what we should be expecting from them. And so, it was truly a great time for all of us. We had that meeting in October, and then we had another one in December where we could, again, discuss our responsibilities and what things that we could approve upon. So, I'm just going to highlight real quickly the overview of the proposed updates. Again, really, the goals for this was to improve efficiency and transparency of the permitting process and improve the community understanding of Murfreesboro's food truck ordinance. Again, although this is not a comprehensive update, we're not changing drastically the ordinance, really the function of it. We're trying to address these gaps so we can address the current opportunities that are presented for us and what we're seeing from the food truck community and other vendors. So, high level, these are some of the proposed changes. We're revising food truck to be a mobile food service vehicle. There's the acronym for it. Just being consistent with it, that's the title of the ordinance itself. And some people would be coming in into the planning department saying, well, I'm not a food truck, so this doesn't apply to me. Yes, it absolutely does. And so, this is something that you have to abide by. These are the standards for it. And so, with that common acronym, we can fold all of them to say, you know, you are a mobile food service vehicle, and these are the regulations for that. We made revisions to the definition section, removing the canteen truck definition. That's not a product that is kind of popular anymore, really. That's not something that's being seen in a lot of the community around here. We revised some things with location and hours of operation, codifying in the ordinance that, yes, you are allowed to have temporary structures like a table or chair for yourself or a table for the condiments for your customers, but you cannot offer anything, you know, for a table for customers can sit at or any kind of lounging or any kind of patio areas that some people are actually constructing outside of their trucks. And so, kind of just, again, codifying those regulations, clearing that up as what's permitted outside of your vehicle and what are those hours or operations that you put up. Operational requirements, kind of just highlighting, again, really just revising some of that language to input these things, what's permitted outside the vehicle and where can you be operating those things. And then finally, the last section for this inside the ordinance was updates to the mobile food service permits. This was a big one because there was some changes to the state where now the state allows you to utilize approval from the Tennessee State Fire Marshal's Office to be used anywhere throughout the state. And so, that was something we had to address, and we wanted to ensure that was being communicated to all the departments as well as vendors, that you don't have to just get approval now from Murfreesboro Fire Rescue. You can get approval from the state as well. And so, on the right side of your screen, these are some of the, aside from the ordinance changes, on the right side of your screen, these are some of the things that we'll be doing. Staff has prepared a one-page document, just kind of that can be easily shared and distributed between vendors when they're coming in. Just shows, again, the basic questions of what you all, what they may have. Where can I set up? What documents do I need? What are some of the standards, the things that are prohibited for vendors for us while we're operating out here? Something that was very easy and quick to understand because a lot of them don't actually go to the ordinance. You almost need a law degree to read it. And so, we wanted it something to be that was simple, clear, clean-cut, that we could share with the community. And then other things, too, is accepting state fire marshal inspection approvals and accepting the health department approval, their actual permit approval, or their actual inspection document. That was another thing because some vendors do not get an inspection report. If you are not preparing or if you are not cooking or anything and you're folding or putting something in a box and selling it out of the truck, that does not require an inspection from the health department. It requires approval, but they will not issue an inspection report to you. And so, that was a little confusing for us because we were requesting them, hey, where's your inspection report? But that was not a document that they were not required to have. Mike Solier and all them confirmed that for those who are maybe a bakery truck and they're selling just cookies in a bag or something like that, they only need to get health department, permit approval from them. They do not need an inspection report. So, that was a very educational moment for us, and that was one of the biggest changes. And then lastly, really, was updating the existing materials on the city's website and information on the permit documents, just kind of reflect where we're at right now. One of the pages on the maps that's available on the city's website has a site of the downtown areas where you can park and sell your food there. Well, one of those locations is One East College, and as you all may know, that's fenced off. And so, we get calls regularly from vendors from Smyrna or Nashville, hey, I'm seeing, where is this site located? Can I sell there at those times? Actually, you can't because this is now a closed-off site for development and, you know, it's been fenced off, so you can't sell around there anymore. So, updating those materials so we can ensure that they are understanding when they come to Murfreesboro, where can I set up? And so, again, really, with these items, we held that public outreach meeting. It was really great. It was positive. We had a lot of vendors that were there and a lot of people, event organizers that were there. We received good feedback and a lot of questions raised on, you know, digitizing the process, what's required with the renewal, and just a lot of great feedback to understand on our process, what we can do to look at our procedure and evaluating that forward, evaluating that now and moving forward, what we can do to change that. But beyond that, those are the main things related to the food truck ordinance that we saw. Again, this is just really trying to address those opportunities as we see this food truck community all around middle Tennessee growing, and we will continue to see more vendors. We wanted to be able to be proactive in this because in the data that we compiled, this is really shocking for me at least, but in 2021, there were 82 permits that were approved. In 2022, there were 94 permits that were approved. In 2023, there was 136 permits that were approved. Some of this is renewal and some of this is new. But this is why we wanted to address that because when Building &amp; Codes shared that information with us, it's clear that this community is growing, and it's clear that we're going to continue to see more vendors, more interest in these types of organizers and these types of vendors coming to this community. And Murfreesboro being a great community setup, we have a lot of people here, we will continue to see that energy coming here. So, that's all that is involved with the ordinance. Again, it is not, no formal recommendation is required, only a vote of support for this in preparation for Murfreesboro City Council is all that required at this time.
We are just asking for, because it's not in the zoning ordinance, it's not something that the Planning Commission makes recommendations on. As Mr. Aguilar said, we are just asking that you vote a resolution of support of the proposed amendments. And I wanted to take the time especially to thank Mr. Aguilar. He has put in countless hours on this project. He kind of has a passion for this subject, and he has worked very hard, done a great job on this, and including engaging the food truck community and getting their feedback. And so, I just wanted to thank him for all the work that he has done on this project.
I agree and ditto that, Mr. Aguilar, and for the entire staff. I think the work it requires to do something like this, but I think the way you all have gone about it, very much appreciate the fact that you reached out to the food truck community, allowed them to be a part of the process. I think it's very similar to the way you all did when we did the brewery ordinance not long ago, by reaching out to the community, letting them be a part of the process. So, we understand what they need, what they want, and try to set our ordinance up accordingly while still doing all the things we need to do to keep everything moving in the right direction. So, I just appreciate it very much. I think it's a huge pat on the back to you and the whole department for the way you all have handled that, and thank you for that.
Thank you, ma'am.
Other comments, or what we are looking for will be a resolution of support for this unless you all have any concerns regarding...
Do you have any other plugs you wanted to make for food trucks?
I'll just say this, you know, everybody comes and...
Plug and I want to eat.
You know, we all have our own specialties in the planning department. We all have very unique talents related to different type of topics, and I just...
Go to your head, Mr. Aguilar.
Yeah, I just, so they just kept seeing that I kept eating at these things, and they're like, this guy, he knows it all. And so, and truthfully, I kind of do because I do go as many of them as I can.
You have a favorite in town that you...
Oh, that's hard. There's too many different, there's too many, too many. And my wallet cannot forgive me for going to all of these, but there's plenty of, there's a lot of great ones around here.
I think we'll have to, since this is reconnaissance, we'll probably have to look into reimbursement for his expenses.
We need a bus tour.
Yeah. Oh, yeah, yeah. We'll stop by for some, you know, some free samples for educational purposes, you know.
Okay. Y'all feel good about it?
Yep.
Do we...
We need a motion or...
We make a motion for a resolution? How do we give a resolution?
Motion for a resolution.
I believe so. Mr. Hankins, any legal guidance?
Yes, I think it would go something to the effect of, I move that the Planning Commission resolve our support for the proposed amendments.
So moved.
Motion's in seconds. Yes. Resolution of support. There we go, Ms. Jacob.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Solis.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye. Okay, next, under staff reports and other business, we have an ordinance amendment to amend the city's stormwater management ordinance. The City of Murfreesboro Water Resources Department is the applicant, and Mr. Josh Upham, who is the stormwater coordinator, is here to present it for us.
Thank you, Chair Jones, Planning Commission. I'm not sure I could follow up that presentation. Very interesting, but I will try.
Food trucks, you know, I don't know.
I've gotten a bit hungry, so that definitely hit the spot. So, I'm coming here, kind of like Joel, for educational purposes, to tell you about some revisions that we've been working hard on over the last year, like to kind of thank the planning department, some folks sitting at the table over here for putting up with all of our indecisiveness in areas and lots of meetings, but we feel pretty confident in the draft that we have now, so I will go through that real quickly, hopefully. So, this is Stormwater Management City Code, Chapter 27 and 1/2. And so, the overall purpose of this chapter is to improve stormwater management, and that's both the quality and the quantity, protect stream banks, and then maintain compliance with the state permit. And you see all the programs that are under that state permit for discharging stormwater from the public drainage system into local streams. And so, why are we making these changes? Well, first off, the ordinance has not been updated since 2008, so obviously lots of clerical changes to be made. And then, we also have to update it to, so our construction site runoff section will line up more with the new construction general permit from the state of Tennessee. But then, most importantly, we've got to make some changes in response to a new state permit that was issued in 2022, and that has to do with the streamside buffers. If you'll remember, we refer to them as water quality protection areas and then stormwater control measure design. So, I want to give kind of a review of our stream status while we're talking about these changes because I think that they'll relate to what we're proposing. You'll see this is taken off of the state's map for impaired waters. I did this last week, and you'll see, I'm going to try to draw here, but you'll see all the red, well, that's not the right tool, that's, but you'll see all the red on the screen are impairments, and that varies from bacteria to habitat alteration, sediment. And then, I want you to notice over kind of on the west side of town, we have blue, and that's for unimpaired, and then obviously gray is unassessed. And then, so next slide, and I kind of want, building up some context to our proposed changes. So, here's a map of downtown area, and it's kind of bright, but you'll see structures, rooftops and so forth are in red, sidewalks, driveways, roads are in gray, and so that amounts to an impervious footprint. And we like to look at this when we're studying watersheds because generally, it's accepted that any impervious cover over 25% contributes to stream suffering, and so, we kind of keep ongoing metrics of what our impervious cover is. And so, you'll see Town Creek is 48%, Sinkin Creek is 36%, and then Lower Lidle Creek within the city limits is roughly 32%. And this impervious cover contributes to high stream temperatures and bacteria and other pollutants. I want you to notice in this downtown area, we have mapped all of the sites that have stormwater control measures on them, and you'll see those... stormwater control measures on them, and you'll see those in the squares. Yellow represents, they're in the planning stages, green is they're done, and then red is under construction. So you'll see in the innermost part of the downtown, we do not have many stormwater control measures. So all of that area draining to Town Creek, for instance, we rely on other best management practices like street sweeping, storm drain clearing, those sort of things. So I'm going to move on to the proposed changes. I'm really summarizing two of the major changes. In the streamside buffers section, water quality protection areas, I just want to give a little background that this is state mandated. These buffers filter runoff, provide stream bank stability, they regulate stream temperature, and then protect property. And we roughly have 16 miles of our stream bank protected in the city. And then if you'll notice up there on the top image there, that's in Pocket Creek, and if you remember going back to the stream impairment map, Pocket Creek was healthy. And so you'll also see on this image the amount of imperviousness. And so the difference, I believe, in a stream like this and maybe ones closer to downtown, we have stormwater control measures. You have detention, streamside buffers, that's what you see in the light green. And so that's a little background on the streamside buffers, but you'll also note in that picture that it's mainly wooded. And so one of the things that we're proposing is that the streamside buffers would be located outside of individual residential lots, and this is for maintenance and enforcement. TDEC expects us to inspect these buffers and make sure that they're being maintained as natural. And so additionally, in this change, we're having to widen the buffer to 60 feet in impaired streams and then exceptional streams. So this is from the top of the stream bank outward. Outside of impaired and exceptional streams, all other streams will remain the same. So that's 50 feet for larger streams and then 35 feet for smaller streams. And then the second and last area that I'm going to highlight are where sites will require stormwater control measures. And so just update on where we are. We have 645 stormwater control measures across the city. We have a team that inspects those after construction, and we estimate about 64% of these would score an A or B on an inspection. There is about 10% that need good maintenance, needs some enforcement possibly. And these stormwater control measures, they include permeable pavers you see at the bottom, detention basins, bio retention, we're seeing a lot of. So what we're proposing in order to help with stream quality and the impacts of imperviousness and even improve drainage is to lower the threshold. So that's going to move to 10,000 square feet of disturbance for streams, sites that are draining to impaired streams, and then 10,000 feet of construction of imperviousness outside of the impaired streams. However, we're going to still offer our low-impact design option, so that's utilizing, we can be less stringent in areas if you utilize green infrastructure. Staff will be looking at an option to provide incentives and water quality reduction for vertical density, green space, and redevelopment. So that's something that we will be looking into. And so so far, we have given a presentation to the Water Resources Board. We gave the city council a heads-up on overview of the changes. We've held stakeholder meetings, although those were not attended. We have received comments. We've provided responses to those comments that are posted on the city's webpage. And then from here, we are hoping to take this to the Water Resource Board next week and then move on to council readings from there. So, and our goal is to have everything implemented by September. So again, I appreciate your time and available for any questions.
Okay.
And Madam Chair, I will mention that Ms. Noel, Ms. Moore, Mr. Moore, and Ms. Knopf have all worked hand-in-hand with Mr. Upham and his team on helping provide input, and so we appreciate their work and we appreciate our partnership with Mr. Upham and the Water Resources Department as well.
Absolutely.
I just have a couple of questions as far as the exemptions go. Are these going to be systematic and stated out where it's not opinioned, like, oh, we're going to, this exemption for this, but we may go a little bit more, just, are they going to be spelled out and systematic that we know if you do this, this is the exemption you get, instead of if you talk to this person, you get this exemption, if you talk to this person, you get this exemption, and everybody you talk to, you get a different exemption?
Yeah, no, I think in our policy, I mean, that's something that we're still working on, and we would, I would think, continue our meetings with the planning department. But yeah, I think that there would be checklists to follow, and it'd be written out in a policy. I mean, obviously, we, you know, we're tasked with removing streams from the state list of impaired waters, and so in doing so, you kind of target watersheds that we believe are contributing, we call significant contributors of pollution, and those typically have high imperviousness, a low vegetation cover, and other things are contributing. So, and I would think when we start to look at that, we'd make sure that, you know, they're checking those boxes, reducing imperviousness, providing green space, introducing stormwater controls in a basin or a catchment that has no treatment. In the downtown, it's, you know, very hard to get the treatment aside from, like I mentioned. So yeah, to answer your question, there would be, you know, it would be spelled out.
And similar to the food truck ordinance, this stormwater management ordinance is not in the zoning ordinance, so it's not anything that the planning department makes a formal recommendation of approval or denial to the city council, but we'd certainly be, I think it would be similar to the food truck ordinance, if you're in support of these amendments, certainly I think a resolution of support similar to what you voted on for the food truck ordinance would be appropriate.
All right. We have a motion for a resolution of support.
I'll make a motion, resolution of support for this new stormwater program and the work that y'all did.
Sick.
Motion and second, Ms. Jekka. Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Salas.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye. All right. Mr. Upham, thank you so much. We appreciate taking the time and sitting through our whole meeting to update us on this.
I was going to say this earlier, but I watch a lot of planning commission on YouTube.
Oh, you poor thing. Sorry.
I worked out my nerves. Sleeping pills do better.
We do have one other item of business real quick before we adjourn today, at least one that I know of. I have been told that today is our last meeting with Mr. Chase Salas, and Chase has been on the planning commission 2018, 19, six years now.
Yes, ma'am.
And so we appreciate very much your six years of service. As those of us sitting up here know, it's not always easy, and we appreciate your time away from your family, your young family. I know it has increased in size while you've been on the planning commission. And we just really appreciate the time and the dedication to the city of Murphysboro and what we're trying to do, so.
Thank you.
Very much. We're going to miss you.
Thank you. I will miss everyone here. I would like to thank all the planning staff who have helped me get along throughout these six years, through my fellow planning commission members that have been great to help me through this time. Learned so much in this position. I really look forward to applying what I've learned here in my future endeavors. So thank you very much for this. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Chase. Did we have any other business? Mr. Blomley or Mr. Hankins, anybody?
Just a, well, a couple of things. Happy belated birthday to Mr. Hankins.
Happy birthday.
Happy belated birthday.
Thank you.
And also wanted to just remind you that due to the July 4th holiday, our planning commission meeting, our planning commission night meeting in July will be the second Wednesday, which will be July 10th. So you'll have a little bit of an elongated time until our next meeting, but I wanted to remind you about that.
Thank you. We need reminders like that. Appreciate it. Any other business? If not, we stand adjourned.